To go.
All right, and we're recorded as well, correct, Mr. Romels?
Yes.
All right, so I will open the, um, the planning board meeting. For today, Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020, uh, being 6:30 and having quorum of the planning board. I'm gonna read in, um, the Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020, order opposing strict limitation on the number of people who may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance at the members of the public. We will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded within 48 hours. We will post the length of the recording on the town's website and or town's social media page. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. Myself, Patrick Driscoll, Chair, Mr. Raymond Agemian, Device Chair, Mrs. Jean Garino, the Clerk, Mr. Michael McDonald, and Mr. Stephen Geller. During this meeting, all votes of the board will be taken, uh, through roll call votes. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely. Mrs. Jennifer Burke, the Community Economic Development Director, Mr. Elijah Romels, who sits in town planner, and Mrs. Leslie Do, the Office Administrator. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. And as items appear on the agenda, the product projects representatives mics will be unmuted. If a project is a public hearing and allows for public comment. We ask that you use the chat feature to ask your question by listing your name and address and your question. The chair will recognize the questions in order. You may also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu. And you will be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you may now start nine to raise your hand. Okay, so, um, at 6:30, we have an executive session, uh, under the open meeting law. This session is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in an open, uh, this, this, excuse me. The session is, the session is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in an open meeting. I think it's just written wrong, or I can't see. The session is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigate, on the litigating position of the public body and the chairs of their class. Open Meeting Law, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Section 3. So, um, with that, will, do we adjourn, or do we just go into executive session, or how do we handle that?
Going to executive session.
All right, so we-
Move to go into executive, you have to take a vote.
All right, so do we, um, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Agemian?
Yes.
Mrs. Garino?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we'll go into executive session and we'll return at 7:30 for our joint hearing with the Town Council and Community Economic Development Committee.
Think I've removed everybody who's not a board member.
You guys good?
Right now.
All right, so are we back?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, just under additional board business this evening, we have minutes to be approved for 11:18, 2020. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Minutes, I sent less, some, just grammatical.
They've been corrected.
Just strictly script, Nazir's?
Yes.
Like, yeah.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the 11:18, 20 minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, Jean, do we have a second?
Second.
Was that by Steve?
Yep.
Any discussion? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. McDonald? Mr. Agemian?
Yes.
I'm a yes, okay.
And 11:04 also.
It's not on the agenda, can we still do it?
That's right, too. It wasn't on the agenda. I just got them so I could read them. I wanted to update myself.
Ms. Burke, or Mr. Romels, are you okay with approving minutes that are not on the agenda or no?
Yeah, this should be fine.
They don't affect anybody else.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the 11:04, 2020 minutes?
So moved.
By, uh, Mr. McDonald, do we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Geller? Any discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Garino?
Yes.
Mr. Agemian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Do we have any board committee or liaison reports or directors' reports at this point?
Um, you don't have to vote on it, but I did send a, um, meeting schedule for next year.
Yes, why don't we discuss that? So, in our packet, we have a, um, 2021 meeting schedule? And why we're talking about the meeting schedule, um, Mr. Romels, I saw that you mentioned that we may cancel the 12:16 meeting?
Uh, yeah, in the, you know, in the event that nothing else pops up.
Yeah, I mean, we should wait and see if we get a form A or something of that nature, correct?
Yeah, it can still stay on the, you know.
What's, what's the first meeting in November, Elijah? It's 11 dash and there's no number there.
Oh, yes. Uh, it should be, uh, the third? Yeah, it should be, uh, November 3rd.
Okay.
11:03. So that, I mean, these dates are basically the first, and did we check with holidays and Veterans Day and all that stuff and make sure there's no conflicts?
Uh, yes.
July 7th, do we, do we typically do one meeting in July, or do we do two?
Uh, we have taken it off the agenda, but in the last two years, it's, uh, we have had a meeting that first week, just because things have, um, kind of crept up.
Yeah, and we can, I mean, we can amend this if we have, right?
Absolutely.
So, all right, do we, do we want to take a vote on this, or is everybody okay with, um, the 2021 schedule? Any glaring conflicts or holidays or something that we see that are? No?
Fine to be.
All right. I don't think we need to vote on this, right?
No.
Right.
Yeah.
So there is five minutes if you did still want to, you know, take a brief recess, but.
All right. Well, good. Is, um, is, is the planning office fully staffed again, or is it still remote, or how is it with Tom Hall right now?
Um, it's fully staffed, um, there are some, you know, different, uh, needs, uh, that need to be met, so.
We are fully staffed. A couple of staff have work accommodations that have been approved by the Human Resources Department. Um, but, um, for those of us that can work full time, we are working full time.
As far as people, the public coming in and stuff, there's no glitches at this point, every, it's the office.
Well, the town manager this week, due to the uptick in cases, has determined that the offices are no longer open to the public. It's ba- backed by appointment only.
All right. Mr. Colin Bodis on yet?
No, I don't see him on the list.
All right, so it's 7:30 now. Do we want to get started? Do we have, do we have Pete not yet?
Yeah, Pete is not on yet.
You want to wait a few minutes?
I can have someone reach out to Counsel Colin Bodis. Counselor Wood or Counselor Chase want to proceed with their meeting without Counselor Colin Bodis, we could move forward. It's up to you if you want to wait for Counselor Colin Bodis, we can do that as well.
I just tried reaching out to Pete also. I haven't seen response yet.
Okay. I'll let, I'll let you folks make that decision from CEDC, so.
Well, Bill, it's up to you, I think, but we can choose to open the meeting.
Oh, we can open the meeting and then start the discussion. I'm sure Pete can catch up quickly.
All right, well, I, I'd make a motion that we, uh, that we open the meeting for, um, the purpose described in the meeting notice.
Yeah, I'll second that. And I assume you're a yes and I'm a yes. We need a roll call in there?
Yes.
I'll open at 7:30 PM. We have a joint hearing with the Town Council and Community Economic Development Committee. And this is in reference to, um, ordinance D F Y 21 dash 003, a zoning ordinance, zoning map amendment for Pleasant Street. Do you want to start discussion, or do we want to wait until?
Uh, you have to do a roll call vote, uh, open the meeting?
We opened up, we came back into our, uh, planning board meeting already, right?
Well, this is a joint session, um.
Ms. Burke, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
You specifically have to open the public hearing.
So you want me to open the public hearing?
Yeah.
All right, so do we have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance D F Y 21 003?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So motion by Mr. Agemian, second by Mr. Geller, any discussion? Mr. Agemian?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Garino?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Uh, it also looks like Counselor Colin Bodis has joined us.
Okay.
Sorry for being late, um, so the meeting, the CEDC meeting has not been opened, is that right?
Yes, it has.
It has been.
Okay. Sorry for my tardiness.
You are free to discuss.
So, uh, you know, I, I probably caused some of this confusion, and I apologize, but, you know, at the, at the last meeting, um, you know, we discussed this, you know, in pretty good detail, I think, and we identified some, some shortcomings with it and made an amendment to try to, to try to address that. And after looking at the ordinance and reading it again and look at the map, I wonder if the amendment went far enough, so I reached out to Counsel Colin Bodis and asked him a few questions and, um, based on that, the, it appears the, the council sent it back to us. So, from, from the staff point of view, I guess I have a question because it was, it was asked quite a bit at the public hearing, whether or not abudders were notified of this zoning change, specifically the abudders on Old Pleasant Street. And I believe the answer was no, correct?
That is correct.
But in the ordinance, it says, "See attached exhibit assesses map proposed zoning change in letter to Pleasant Street Abudders that dated September 3rd, 2020." So, that gives me the impression that abudders were notified. Were they not, or?
Abudders were not notified, the property owners whose parcels are affected by design change were notified.
All right, but the, but the, what I'm saying is the ordinance says that abudders were notified, so that, that's why I had the, I, I had that, that question, so, so they were not notified, all right. So then, then my question to Pete was that we talk about changing the boundary of industrial E to business B, and then we list the lot, which personally I'm in favor of. I think that makes sense. I think the justification for it's good. But in the explanation, it talks about rezoning those lots, um, that are industrial E, and then it talks about a portion of the gateway business district. But in fact, we're also amending some AB as well. We're removing a, a 350-foot offset zoning line off of, off of Pleasant Street, which, after looking at this and, and saying, you know, it's advertised one way, explained one way, abudders were not notified. I think it's a good idea to change industrial E to B, but I think we should leave that zoning line, that 350-foot offset off of Old Pleasant Street. That was just, like, you know, things that I picked up after the meeting. Because that, that zoning line is not on the map that we have before us. So I don't know if you want to add to that, Mr. Colin Bodis, uh?
Um, yeah, I'm of the same mind. I mean, that the, um, as you suggest, the, the language of, you know, removing that 350-foot demarcation is not, there's no language in the ordinance expressing that. It just refers to the map and the map. So it's not clearly really stated anywhere that we are in fact removing that 350-foot, um, demarcation and-
Which, which alters industrial, which alters residential AB to some degree. And it, and it allows further approachment, frankly, into the residential AB zone. And the abudders were not notified, even though it's indicated they were on the, in the zoning ordinance. And, um, you know, they, it would be a change that's not properly advertised because it doesn't even mention that AB is also included in this change in the explanation. So, so I, I just think that to be fair, to be fair to those residential, used, to, to be fair to those residential homes on Old Pleasant Street, and, and if you look at the map that Mr. Romels has shown us now, the lighter blue shows up, um, that's pretty much the, the three, that's the 350-foot line, I think, right there. And that, that map is confusing because some of that gray area is also proposed to be business B, but it's just because of the overlay, it's not showing, it's dark. So, I, I mean, I, I'm in favor of it. I, I think changing the whole zone that, that, what's, you know, what's currently industrial E and, and identified to be business B should be changed to business B, but I think the residential AB should be left alone.
If I may, I, I first of all commend the sheriff for picking this up, because I didn't, uh, see this at all during our original discussion, but my question, general question is, if we advertise this um, as being, uh, that the abudders were notified, uh, maybe we need a legal opinion as to whether we could even proceed, uh, if the abudders were not notified.
If I remember correctly, from our last, uh, joint session, uh, we learned from Ms. Burke that the, um, that the notices were appropriate uh, under our ordinances, and that the, the site owners of the areas to be impacted were notified. But then I did raise the other question as to whether residents of Old Pleasant Street, uh, were notified, and we were informed they were not. And we know that, that they still were not. So, my impression is, a- and, uh, Ms. Burke, perhaps you can a- address this, is that you know, the notice as we have published it is appropriate under the regulations, but we're just getting back to the point of getting this question out of whether it's also appropriate to notify the abudders of Old Pleasant Street. Does that sound correct?
Well, I can answer the question that the, the notice of the ordinance uh, is legal and appropriate, and the ordinance has been advertised correctly. Um, the notices sent out were sent out as a courtesy to the property owners. We're not even required to do that under the law. Um, we did that as a courtesy. Um, we are not required under state law to send any notices to abudders or anyone for zoning ordinances, and we do not have any local ordinances that require that. Um, it went through that at the previous hearing regarding the cost effect that would have to the town and the hardship that would provide to the town. Um, we typically do what is required under the law, um, for notices. In regards to the second part of your question, I don't know whether or not you need, you want to determine whether or not you want to notice other people. That would be a decision that I guess you would, the council would have to make about noticing additional people. I can't make that for you.
So, Mr. Chase, can I try to clarify what I said earlier, maybe? My, my, my concern was if, if, if the abudders don't need to be notified, they don't need to be notified. That's, that's the law. I mean, that's, that's, it is what it is. But the ordinance never mentions in the text of the ordinance, changing the AB line, which is the residential line on, off of Old Pleasant Street, which is a 350-foot offset. It doesn't state it in the beginning or the explanation of the ordinance. In addition, those people that are living on residential lots, if you read the ordinance, you would assume they were notified because it says a, a September 22nd, 2020, letter to Pleasant Street abudders. That's not property owners, that's abudders. So, one would assume that they were notified, which they weren't. And one would assume that if they read the ordinance, they would say, hey, nothing's changing with AB. It's, you know, what's IE is going to be. So, I, I think in fairness to those people on Old Pleasant Street that have a big investment in their residential home, that count on zoning for protection, it's not in the ordinance, and they weren't notified. I think we should, you know, I'm, I'm fine, I'm in favor of changing the IE to B, but I think that the ordinance is different from what the map shows, and I think we should maintain that 350-foot offset zoning line off of, off of Old Pleasant Street. Now, we rectified part of the problem just on that lot 84 before, but after reading this and thinking about it after the meeting, I don't think we went far enough. I think, I think we should maintain that line that's currently there, the, the divisional line between the, uh, industrial E and the residential AB, and not change that line, but change, but change the, what's on the existing IE side to B.
Understood, and, uh, I, I agree with-
Understood, and I agree with that.
Mr. Chair, could I just follow up with that if you would permit me?
Sure.
I see your point, and I certainly don't disagree. I think we were trying, and I think, I don't have it in front of me, but what the ordinance should say is the abutters to the affected properties on Pleasant Street. And if the perception was that all the abutters on Old Pleasant would be notified, that was certainly not the intent, and that certainly didn't happen. But all the abutters to the affected properties on Pleasant Street were notified. And we did, as Jennifer said, that we did that as a courtesy because we're not required to do that. But we just wanted to make sure that people whose businesses could potentially be affected knew what was going to happen. But having heard your concern, I have to admit that I don't disagree with that. I do think that the Planning Board and Community and Economic Development Committee should have a broader discussion about zoning delineations, just philosophically. Because I do think that there's a lot of discussion that has to be had about the appropriateness of bisecting lots with zoning lines. I think that's a discussion that does have to be had. But I don't know for these purposes whether now is the right time. I don't think it's the right time to have that discussion. But if it's more appropriate to, you know, contain or to propose or recommend an amendment to the council that preserves that 350-foot setback, at this point, it preserves the current zoning line, which bisects a few of those properties. You know, I think that probably would be the most appropriate way to move forward.
Just for clarification, the the, the single-family lots on Old Pleasant Street do abut the Pleasant Street properties. They're directly behind it. So one would assume from the ordinance that they were notified.
Yeah. And as I said, I'll have that wording in front of me, so I apologize if it, you know, if it somehow implies that. But I think the intent of, or what we were trying to say was that the abutters to Pleasant Street were notified. All the abutters to Pleasant Street were notified.
So, so I, I mean, like I said, I'm fine with it. I just, I think that we are being unfair to that. The more I thought about it, I thought we'd be unfair to the residential property owners on Old Pleasant Street. And I also think that if the council goes along with this amendment, that maybe an updated map could be provided to the council, putting that 350-foot delineation line back on and having the council vote on a plan that's not a draft. Because a draft would indicate that something else may be, you know, changed after it's voted on.
So if Elijah could put up the other version of the map that you had up before, yeah. So there, that delineates your, I assume that delineates the 350-foot setback off of Old Pleasant, correct?
It does if you look at it just quickly. But if you look at it in more depth, there are shaded areas that are AB that are going to be in this map. But if you look at that with like slate blue line, that's the line that we want to maintain, the grayish, faded out grayish. It's just because the colors on the plan are meshing, I believe. And I think that corner that's gateway business, that makes sense to make that business B. And that's, I mean, that's basically surrounded by industrial E already. And it's, at least it's in the explanation that a piece of gateway business is going to, going to business B.
Yeah.
So how does this affect, like, plot 7147 there? I'm not sure how the 350-foot setback and the change to B affects lots like that one.
Well, I think those are already developed anyway. I think one of them is a restaurant, I believe. And actually, 7147 is a single-family residential home, I believe.
Correct.
So you're suggesting that in the ordinance, it stays with the lot descriptions, but you're suggesting adding another bit of language for the 350-foot setback?
I would just say that we maintain the existing delineation line between Old Pleasant Street and, you know, what's industrial E will go to business B, and what's residential AB will stay residential AB. We won't change that line.
So the 350-foot setback only pertains to the light gray area that extends from lot 8443 to Old Pleasant Street. Is that correct?
If you look at the zoning map, which I have here, it goes from the outside edge of Old Pleasant Street. So industrial E currently starts from the outside edge of Old Pleasant Street back 350 feet towards Pleasant Street. And that's where industrial E starts. So from some location, I don't know if the town measures from the edge of the middle of the road. I mean, that's a minor detail. 350 feet back is the residential protection that is granted. And then after that, it turns to industrial, industrial industrial E. And I'm saying what's industrial E after that 350 feet, which is already currently industrial E, could go to B. Zoning also already provides protection for lots that are transacted by a zoning line, that you can operate 30 feet into the zoning line and count that as part of the other zoning. That's a zoning provision that we have. So if you do have a lot that's divided by a zoning line, which lots of lots are, because zoning lines are typically based off of a point in the street, they can operate within three. You know, if you had a restaurant that went into residential AB, you can operate 30 feet into that zone. Now we're looking at moving that line back potentially on some lots. Now they can go another 30 feet. So we already have that provision that allows them to work in AB already. And if we move that line back that we haven't advertised, that, you know, isn't in the ordinance at all, and I don't think, you know, we should do it. We already have a provision that allows for transacted lots.
So what happens closer to the corner of Elm Street with that setback?
The corner about those are residential houses.
So, I think Mr. Wood is talking about lots 7147 and 7112 and 7176? Are those the three that are?
The second of 12 and 76. It seems like all of 47 is within that 350 feet.
So which is shaded to be changed stays residential or it changes to business B?
With shaded slate will go to business B. I mean, it's slate on my computer. I don't know.
Right. So that slate line is pretty straight up to the corner of 4147 and 7112, right? And then so 7147, are you saying that that stays as residential or shifts to business?
Residential. It's currently a Cape-style house with a two-car garage. But it's currently residential. We're not changing anything over there. What I'm suggesting is, is the way it was advertised and the way it's laid out, I think we should leave it alone. But that's
And that property is not on the list to be changed. Is that right? I can't see the full ordinance.
7147 is on
Everything that's indicated or labeled is to be changed to business B.
To the map is just, see, if you look at it, it is a different color. It's just, it's just the way the overlay goes. It's a light.
Oh, it's not going to stay residential.
Right, it will be changed.
And 8143?
What Pat's saying is that under his proposal to amend this, it would stay residential. As it's currently advertised, it would not, but
Right.
It's going to, what, 7147 is staying residential?
That's what Pat is proposing.
Based on the lack of notification and representing that we did notify, and based off the way the ordinance is written, not describing that any AB is being changed, I personally, I mean, I personally think we should keep that zoning line the way it is for now.
I agree with that entirely. Keep what's currently residential residential. Switch the industrial to business B.
And what about that strip that comes out to Old Pleasant Street down at off of 8143?
That would all stay residential AB.
That would, so it seems like we need some language within the ordinance itself asserting the maintenance of that 350-foot setback. Would that solve the problem?
If you simply
Explicit language saying that existing 350-foot setback from Old Pleasant Street shall be maintained.
No, I'm looking at, let me see, let me pull up the zoning map.
Or if you simply just said that the existing industrial E on the following lots will be converted to commercial or business B, rather, yeah. I mean, that, I think, affects the change that we're really intending without, you know, trying to parse out every little, you know, measuring 350 feet. Because if what Mr. Driscoll's talking about is just maintaining that 350-foot setback, then you've already got your zoning line. So all you really have to do is say, you know, anywhere there's industrial E on the following lots, that now becomes business B.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's probably the most elegant way to do it.
And if you look, if you look at the zoning map, it shows the furthest edge, it looks like the furthest edge of Old Pleasant Street. So the edge across the street from the lots, which is probably a 40-foot layout, right, at least a 40-foot layout, to the back of those lots, and there's two arrows pointing in a dark line, it shows that residential AB is, it takes up 350 feet. So I, you know, I just think that that line that's currently on, the delineation line that's currently on a zoning map should just remain there, and everything on the IE side of it should go to business B.
I don't know that that strip of land that comes down to Old Pleasant Street is protected, and it stays.
That, this will take care of that. Because if we didn't do that, under business B, the lot size is smaller, and the frontage requirement is smaller, that could actually become a commercial lot between two houses. So we don't want that to happen.
Yeah, no, right.
So by maintaining that line, Gene, it's doing what we did last time. It's just, we made, the amendment we made last time was to maintain the AB line on 8443, but not on the other lots. And this is just going to make sure that that 350-foot zoning delineation line stays. Do we want to open up the public comment? A more board comment?
Oh, if I may again, I just, I don't disagree with what this discussion is. I think the recommendation is a valid recommendation. I just questioned, again, the notification issue, whether if somebody on Old Pleasant Street decided to challenge what we're doing right now, I think they have a pretty good case since they were not notified. I just wonder whether we're setting ourselves up for a potential problem down the road by not notifying those people.
Or they could just amend, or maybe, or maybe we just, Mr. Jimmy, what we could do is, is if the council, the CED committee wants to adopt our recommendation that we maintain the 350-foot line, maybe they can amend the ordinance that says the "September 22, 2020, letter to property owners and abutters and re-advertise it." Because the way it's written, the way the ordinance is written, abutters were notified.
That's my point.
So instead of delaying it, why don't we, maybe the council could just amend the word "abutters" to property owners, or to affected property owners.
I think Mr. Jimmy's point is well taken, but I do think that you've had public notice, published public notice. And you certainly had, you know, a couple of public meetings on this. So I don't, I don't think, and especially if you decide to recommend to the council, and the council maintains the existing the existing line between residential and what's now industrial. I think that's actually less restrictive than, or less, yeah, less impactful, less restrictive than it was when it was advertised. So I don't think, I don't think there's really any, if that's the route you choose to go, I don't think there's any, you know, any issue with, you know, any notice issue or re-advertising issue. I think you're pretty much in the clear on that.
I don't disagree with what you just said, Michael, but I'm just thinking that if I were an abutter and for any reason I was upset about this, I think I would have a pretty strong case that I wasn't notified.
From what Mrs. Burke was saying earlier, if we're in compliance with state law regarding notification, they wouldn't really have a leg to stand on in that case.
Excuse me, Pat, I'm a little confused. On the zoning notice that I have, the notice of joint public hearing, it doesn't say anything about notifying the abutters with a letter. Where did you see that one?
I'm actually looking at the ordinance itself, Council Ordinance DFY21-003. So it starts off by talking about the council assembled to change the boundary of the industrial E by rezoning the lots to business B. Then it lists the lots. Then it says, "The letter to Pleasant Street abutters was dated September 3rd."
Okay, I see that. But that's not the, that's not the notice that was in the paper.
Correct. But this is the, this is the legislation that would make it happen, I guess. So I just, I think it should be right. You know, if the letter didn't go to abutters, we should probably amend it to property owners.
And I think the language of the ordinance would be better suited if it said, Pat, I think you kind of phrased it this way, but can you bring that back up, Elijah?
Yes.
Yeah. So because there's a couple lots in here, you know, that are split, if we keep the 350-foot buffer zone or delineation, then maybe the language above needs to say something like, you know, change industrial E to business B, following the, you know, following the same delineation as exists today for, across these lots. I'm not sure how you guys phrase it for Planning Board use. But it seems like some of these lots, we can't just say fully that they're going to be converted because they're not, if we want to keep that line.
And then I think that one that Mr. Chase, well, Mr. Wood pointed out, the one that is the residential house, which is, I think, 7147, should come out of that list.
Can I just interrupt for one second?
Sure.
I would just argue, reading the ordinance, that it does say that to change the boundary of industrial E by rezoning the lots listed below to business B, it doesn't say anything about changing the entire lot. It says to change the boundary of industrial E. So I would argue that it's noticed appropriately, and there's no issue.
So that if you, if the two boards decide to make a change, there's not, you know, there's no need to re-notice that. Is that correct?
I'm not aware, but that would be my argument.
I disagree with that because it says by rezoning the lots. And so to me, it sounds like we're rezoning the entire lot, not just the portion covered by industrial E. it sounds like we're rezoning the entire lot, not just the portion covered by industrial E. I think that's the issue that, that we've been talking about.
Right, but if, if, I, I think you're, you're fine, and, and it's, you know, again, um, if, if you're sticking, if you're gonna change, if you're gonna propose to change it to a less restrictive, you're, you're not going to expand uh that, that zoning line into, you know, into uh all of the lots that are listed, you know, only portions of the lots that are listed, then it's, it's less um, you know, it's, it's less impactful or less um less impact to those lots, so it's, it's not, you know, you're, you're, you're scaling it back, you're not expanding it. If you are expanding it, you know, as we know from other issues in town, if you were going to expand it, you'd have to renotice and readvertise and re-hear. But in this case, we've noticed uh properly and you're going to scale it back slightly, so I, I think you're okay with the notice.
No, I'm fine with the notice. I, I'm just looking for the language to scale back.
So, and I'm not on the council, but would, if you guys made the amendment to, to maintain the existing uh delineation line between residential A B and industrial E back to the council and we voted to support that and, and rezon the area to business B, wouldn't it be up to the, the council or sponsors to clean up the, the language and, and amend it and readvertise it? So we, we might remove like seventy-one forty-seven and we might say that assemble to change the boundary or, or assemble to change the portion of lots that are currently industrial E by rezoning the lots to business B instead of the boundary and then removing lot seventy-one forty-seven and proposing an amendment and changing letter to Pleasant Street abutters to property owners.
I don't think the planning board should be telling the council how to adjust their ordinances.
I think the planning board should be making a recommendation for amendments to what the council should have done. So I was hoping at this meeting that.
That was my point, like the council can handle the language, it's just we should make an amendment and then you guys figure out how to handle it.
The planning board cannot make amendments to our zoning ordinances, they can only vote it up or down as presented before them.
Can they, can the planning board make recommendations to the full council?
They cannot.
But we, we can, we can do the same thing we did last time and vote it down and say, but we would support it if the three hundred and fifty foot the residential setback line was maintained, correct?
Yes.
So there, there's, is there some language in mass general law that prevents the planning board from making suggestions to the town council regarding its legislation that came from the council? It seems like a waste of, the, the planning board is that knows a whole lot more about zoning than the council does. Uh, it seems like, I don't understand why we can't rely on their expertise for how to improve legislation coming from us.
Under our form of government, you are the legislative body, the planning board, not there simply an advisory body to the, the town council.
Right.
What we're looking for is, is.
So, so they can make advice to you based on what is presented before them, they cannot draft amendments or additional legislation to you.
So could they advise us to amend our ordinance?
According to the town attorney, uh I've been told no, I mean, maybe the town manager has a different thought, but I don't.
Isn't that, if I may say, isn't that exactly how we came to have this session tonight?
I'm not privy to how we came to have this session tonight, Mr.
Could I, could I um suggest that maybe we open it to the public before we decide on how to vote or to have further discussion?
So, so before we go there, Pat, so it's a joint meeting. The, the, the subcommittee of the town council certainly has the ability to recommend to the full town council amended language that should happen. So what I'd like to come out of this meeting with is a recommendation that the, that the joint meeting supports, and then the committee of the council will bring it back to the council for amendments. Does that sound like it would work?
That's absolutely right, you can do that.
Right, the planning board can informally recommend to our subcommittee changes that we might make and bring back to the council. Right. That's a good way to frame it.
Do we, and Mr. Wood, Mr. Columbatus or anybody, I don't want to cut you off, but do we want to see if, Mr. Ramos, have you seen if anybody is, um, has raised a hand that would like to speak at this point?
Uh, it does look like uh Mr. Souza has raised his hand.
Yes.
You have been unmuted.
Okay, about the notification. At one point, Main Street where I live was mixed use, okay? The, this goes back quite a few years because it was not a council. It was the selectmen who changed it to strictly residential. Okay, and we never received a notice. And when we finally found out sometime later that it happened, we were told under state law because it was not an individual looking for the zone change, but the town, we did not have to be notified. So if that's the provision that was back then and it's still today, then you're notifying the people you did what you had to do or what you should have done. Uh, but listening to everything you're saying tonight, I, I agree with you, I, you know, I, I think that, you know, there are times when things get put in and we have to look at them and say, well, this particular lot, like you're saying, seventy-one forty-seven, let's set it aside uh and, and a few other little changes and clarify, sometimes that's all things need is to be clarified, and that's what, in my opinion, is what you're doing. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment, Mr. Ramos?
Uh, it does not look like anyone has used the raise your hand feature or physically raising their hand or entered anything into the chat, uh so no.
If I may, uh, Mr. Trump, I just want to go on record here. I mean, it's been said uh by a number of people and I'm, I accept the fact that it's true that the state does not require notification for zoning changes. I understand that and I'm, 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 I'm sure we're following the letter of the law. But it seems to me um that we have a, a just responsibility to, of a courtesy to allow people that are going to have zoning changes, abutting their property, be notified of those changes. I mean, in this case, it's going, going to move towards the better, it seems to me, but it, it could go the other way, and those people should be notified. And I understand the expense and so forth, but it's just one of those things that I think we should be doing. That's all.
Yep. I'd like to uh concur with Mr. Jimmy's statements. I mean, perhaps there's some way we could set up, you know, where citizens can submit their, their address and then email address, you know, their, their street address and an email address, and we could set up some sort of database which could pretty cheaply send out a bulk email to anyone who's, you know, over there in the, the subject area. I think it's, you know, you're talking about people's main investment, you know, in their main financial depth investment. Some of these zoning changes could have a pretty dramatic impact on that, on that investment, so I think we owe it to citizens to inform them even if the letter of the law doesn't require us to.
I agree with you both on that point, however, I, I, I would just be a little concerned that the manner of notification that you've described, uh Peter, uh, as basically an email uh is not going to meet any um, it, it's not going to satisfy any statutory requirement uh such as pertains to a butters. Uh, so I think it would need to be a more formal uh notification, but I, in principle, I, I agree with the comments that you uh and Mr. Jamie have made.
Right, well, we've already satisfied the statutory requirements, right, and there, this is, I'm really just talking about a, a courtesy to the citizens, and it's kind of going above and beyond our, what we're required to do.
Understood, and, and that's a subtlety that, that, you know, we, we've nuanced that carefully here, I think we understand that. But I think that the abutter who receives that email or who, who doesn't uh receive it, who doesn't read it perhaps, uh is, is going to be very upset and is going to contend that he should have been notified by a more formal process like certified mail.
So it's kind of like um Good Samaritan work, by trying to do good, we kind of open our.
There, there's that hazard, yes.
Well, the other thing is that this.
I was agreeing to the certified mail. I, I didn't say it, but I think Mr. Chase is correct.
A, a, and in this case, it's very easy to identify, you know, what the affected properties are, but in other zoning changes that we've done in years past, it's, it's a much broader coverage across, you know, central business district or much larger areas, so it'd be difficult to, to make notification. I think that's why the state statute is, if you've properly notified the hearing with, with the correct um corrected um listing, then, then that's probably proper notification.
If I may to add to uh Mr. Wood's point, um if you were to advertise to the abutters or certify mail to the abutters, it may establish a precedent that the town may not want to undertake, um just my opinion.
And again, this is, this is kind of a discussion should probably help happen elsewhere, but how we get back to the matter.
And I, you know, I'm not saying we had to, we didn't have to, we should or we shouldn't, I'm just saying the ordinance says we did, right? It says right in there, we sent a letter to the abutters dated September third, and we didn't. So I just, I, I think that needs to be clarified, because at our last meeting, we told we didn't, the ordinance says we did, and, and it didn't go to a butters, it went to property owners, so. Do you guys want us to make a motion for a recommendation? Do you want?
So if, if I could, I, I would offer just to, to make it a little easier, uh possibly a language change just to the first sentence of the ordinance. Uh, and then uh to order pursuant to so and so, the town council assembled vote to change uh the industrial E to business B on the following lots, and then we can carve out the lots that aren't impacted. Or I think there's only one, I think, does that, does that affect, uh, does that solve the problem?
And then, and then cha-change the map to, to, to put the three hundred fifty foot offset line back in.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, we, you know, revise the, the, um, sort of the cheat sheet map, absolutely.
Is the only being taken out the forty-seven?
I think that's the only one.
That's the only one that would completely.
Under forty-seven, that would be affected too, but those are the only two that'd be completely removed.
So, Mr. Dutton, your change would not um address the issue of the um lot on corner of Elm and Pleasant that is partially Gateway.
Okay, then, okay.
People are concerned that, that every single district is not addressed, you'd have to address that as well.
But it, isn't, Gateway's an overlay, right?
No, it is not.
No, I think that's the perception is that the gateway is an overlay, but the gateway is actually a zoning district.
So we need a second sentence, sentence.
And, and, yeah, and then, and then change, you know, lot. Well, and then, and then it changed.
Or Gateway.
Right, right, that solves the problem.
Can you repeat back that piece of the proposal?
Right, so it would say uh the town council assembled votes to change the industrial E and Gateway to business B on the following lots. And then it would be the list of lots with the exception, I believe, of seventy-one forty-seven.
So, Pete and Fred, does that, does that language sound right to you now?
I, I think it does, yes.
So I'll make a motion in our committee to make a recommendation to change that language.
Amend the ordinance.
So, so again, we are not amending the ordinance, we're making a recommendation that when it comes back to the council, we're making, we're, we're proposing the amendment.
I would second your motion.
Discussion?
It seems to me that the language that's been provoked, proposed is appropriate and accompanying the um, the three hundred and fifty foot uh, you know, lot line on the, on the map would also take care of everything we're here to discuss, would it not?
I think it would.
Um, it would have to take a roll call vote.
Yeah, we will vote on that, and I've got two more, I think, based on our discussion.
So I'll call for a roll call vote, Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to propose an amendment to remove the item map seventy-one lot forty-seven from the list.
Seconded.
Uh, discussion?
I think that's the only, the only one that's affected. If there's a second one, we can certainly change the amendment, but I think that's the only one that was identified.
It appears to be. No discussion, um, Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
And lastly, the language about the abutters notice, I, I think that's probably a Scrivener's error, so I'll make the motion to recommend that we change abutters to property owners.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
No.
Mr. Chase?
No, none.
Uh, okay, all of, uh, Mr. Chase, uh, your vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
So now the sticky part, so we've made those recommendations, make that recommendation to the full town council, we can, we can vote on whether our committee recommends this or not. I understand the up or down, but is, is there any leeway to say up if these are amended? Uh, I think that was part of the discussion before, from, from the planning board.
Yes, they can, they would, as similar to what they did in your last hearing, they could vote to not recommend as written, but if the council were to adopt the amendments proposed by the C E D C, planning board would support those amendments.
Okay, so from the, from the council committee, I make a motion that we recommend the uh the ordinance as with the recommended emotion, recommended amendments.
And I would second that.
Any discussion?
No.
Mr. Chase, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
All right, so, so do we have a um motion from the planning board to um endorse the uh ordinance as presented?
I think, I think we'd want to do the opposite, I think we'd want to reject it as presented, is that correct?
That's correct.
You can, you can reject what is presented or endorse it, how it would be and feel.
Uh, yeah, I guess I'd make a motion to reject a, a proposed change as presented uh with the uh, I don't know how to phrase it exactly, but you know, with the, with the, the note that we support the uh C C's uh proposed changes.
So we have a motion to reject as presented, but to uh favorably endorse if, if the C E D changes are adopted by Mr. McDonald. Do, do we have a second?
Okay.
Second, and, and just to be clear, Mr. Wood, because I was reading something, that one of those proposed changes does include reestablishing that three hundred fifty foot or leaving that three hundred fifty foot line along, correct?
If I understood the description uh correctly, because it's all remarked as industrial E with that line already imposed, and then the switch to business B with the language we use keeps that line.
All right, so we have a, a motion by Michael, did somebody second it, I'm sorry?
I did.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Do we have any discussion?
That takes out seventy-one forty-seven, is that what we're discussing, and then the leg on eighty-four forty-three?
Right, because we're going to maintain the, the existing.
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay.
So, but, but we're also including that corner gateway. Um, do we have any more discussion? So I'll start with you, Mrs. Corina.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jamie?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Where'd you go? And, I mean, that's- So that's, that's it, right?
Yes, both boards or committees would have to separately adjourn, but-
So just for discussion, just why we have the CED here, and I don't know how we do this and how we don't, but- Mr. Dutton, why are you on? Is Mr. Dutton still on?
I'm here.
So zoning typically originates with the council, and then sometimes, sometimes planning board gets it. You know, typically, we get it, you know, three or four business days before the hearing, and we have to do our own research and ask questions. And then if we want to make an amendment, it has to go back to the council, be re-advertized, we have to vote it down. Is there, I mean, let's say Mr. Wood wanted to propose a zoning amendment. Is there a way to have him draft it and send it to the planning board to put on our meeting agenda and say, hey, you guys have any feedback on this? Can you give me, you know, an indication if this is a good idea, a bad idea, or are there any recommendations you should make? And then he could take that recommendation or not take that recommendation and continue to go forward with it either way. But at least if we had some sort of an informal workshop or something that's, because it seems like a lot of work was done on this. And it gets to the planning board at the end. And then, you know, if that's the way it has to be, that's the way it has to be. But it just seems like it's a messy process. Like we had this with the marijuana, it goes back and forth, back and forth. And it takes up council time and planning board time. And it just seems that if we had a more collaborative process where we were notified that, you know, Mr. Wood, Mr. Wood and Mr. Colin Bodas and Mr. Chase was proposing a zoning amendment, and this is what they were thinking. And we could have an informal discussion and give a general recommendation back. These are changes we'd make, or these are concerns that we see. Wouldn't that make the process a lot smoother?
I would, I would say that absolutely would make the process a lot smoother, and it would, you know, as a rule, very, very much in favor of a lot more communication among the boards. Having said that, you know, I'd have to probably defer to Jason on the mechanics. Because when it comes to a lot of things, zoning, you know, probably in particular, you know, the law is very, very specific about what you can do and what you can't do. And quite frankly, I don't, I still don't, can't quite wrap my head around why the planning board, you know, can't, you know, quote unquote, can't make, you know, proposed changes to something that you see in front of you. And maybe there's a way to do that more effectively, but I do know that, you know, we've in the past, and not recently, we've gotten into some trouble with zoning, not following, you know, the proper procedures and following the rules. So I guess the short answer to your question is absolutely. It makes far more sense to me to be able to have, you know, a more collaborative and sort of a workshop setting to run ideas. And with a lot of zoning changes coming up, I think we're going to have to figure out a way to do that because we can't treat every single little zoning change, you know, with lengthy prolonged hearings and notifications going back and forth between the council and the planning board. So I think between Jennifer and me and Jason, we need to figure out a way to make that make that communication much easier than it seems to be right now. I just, I'm not clear about how that happens yet. But I definitely want to make sure that that happens. That's like, that's like a non-answer, really long non-answer to your question.
Well, I mean, it just seems like the process is very cumbersome. It just seems like you could streamline it. And, you know, we get the ordinance, the packet the Friday before, and you try to educate yourself on it. Look at, look at things, and then you pick up things in meetings, and after the meeting, you're like, God, and I, somebody brought this to my attention, or this was pointed out, and I should have picked that up. But it's almost a rushed process from the planning board side that that we get it at the end of the process for planning board recommendation. So it's basically done before the planning board even weighs in, and that just seems, that just seems, you know, a little-
You know, I think, I think, you know, I know, I know Jason and Jennifer have talked a lot about trying to create a better process. You know, if and how that can include, you know, a freer form of communication between the two boards or among the several boards is what I think is really critical. Because as much as, as much as I want, you know, boards to try to focus and maintain their lanes, so to speak, I also want to make sure that there's a good cross-pollination of policy discussion and a good cross-pollination of ideas among boards as well. Because if you can do that, you're more likely to get everybody sort of rowing in the same direction.
Is there anything to preclude an individual counselor from meeting with a, having a scheduled discussion on the planning board agenda to say, I'm contemplating a certain piece of zoning legislation? Could I bring it to the planning board under some discussion item on the planning board's agenda for consultation that way?
I can't see any problem with that.
Maybe that is-
And then if we had questions or needed information of the planning board, we could say to Ms. Burke and to Mr. Romels, hey, can you, you know, Mr. Colin Bodas, you know, we can't give them feedback until we know why this is on this way, what's currently on the lot, can you give us that info? We could have that given back to us and give Mr. Colin Bodas an informal recommendation.
Right.
Yeah, I, again, I don't see any issue with that. But, you know, I've, you know, I don't want to steer you in that direction without making sure that it complies with, with the laws Jason said.
But as long as it's properly notified, you can have a discussion item on anything on any agenda, so there shouldn't be an issue with that. The other suggestion I would have, and Michael, this is maybe for you and Ann, you know, when we talked about this when I was on FinCom, the same type of thing would happen, is the council would vote to move something to FinCom. And then FinCom wouldn't see it until just before, you know, the two-day notice or whatever. And I suggested at that point, and it really hasn't taken practice, but I suggested that as soon as the vote to move it to committee is made, the committees should get a copy of that ordinance. So that they have time well in advance of any hearing or any scheduled meeting to individually take a look at that and do their own research or ask their own questions individually before it gets into the meeting format. It's not to, not to get around any open meeting law, it's simply to give someone the ability to go and research the maps or research the property or do other, you know, mass general law research that they need to do to prepare for the meeting and come well-prepared. So we have fewer surprises.
Right. And that individual FinCom member could go to the proponent of the legislation directly.
Yeah, and the same thing with planning board, same thing with anyplace else we send legislation.
And I think, that's a good point. I think procedurally or process-wise, what happens is that the council refers things, and then whoever the board clerk is, you know, Ann will notify that, okay, these things have been referred. And then it doesn't, it doesn't go, at that point, it doesn't go out to the referring board. It gets held until the agenda's posted and the meeting materials are compiled, and then it goes out. So I see your point now, and maybe that's what Pat was talking about. You know, about, about two, you know, two days before, because that's usually when you get your meeting materials. But if there's a way to compile the legislation that gets referred to the boards before, you know, the official meeting materials are sent out, and at least get those out to the board members so that they got plenty of time. I think that's something Ann and I can work on. And see if we can make that a little bit easier.
Well, what I was thinking is, once the ordinance is its final form, right, it's advertised. So then to modify it has to be re-advertized, correct?
Basically, yeah.
So I guess what I was thinking of is, let's say that Mr. Colin Bodas is going to propose a zoning change. Is a draft zoning ordinance, is a draft done and provided to the council before it moves forward? And could that draft be provided to the planning board and say, hey, you guys have thirty days to give a non-binding, you know, favorable recommendation with, you know, with comments for thirty days before we put it in its final form? And if the council decides to adopt those or not adopt those, that's up to him. But at least, at least we know what's coming. At least we feel we weighed in on it. Maybe it prevents it from going back and forth, back and forth. I'm just preventing it from going back and forth, back and forth, and having to be re-advertized to cost the town money and having the town has to put it back and forth on the council agenda. If there's some way why it's in draft form that it can come to us, and we can say, hey, it's a good idea, or it's no problem, or we picked up that lot XYZ is an issue, or we shouldn't change this, and this is why. And it just, it just seems like if we, when it's in draft form, if it could come to us for like a thirty-day window, you know, and we respond with comments, and then it moves forward and comes to us for a final review, it could all be done in an open meeting.
No, I think, I think that's, that's, those are really good points, and I'll, you know, we'll work on trying to figure out a process that makes, that ensures that you have some kind of improved communication. I, you know, as you're talking about that, I go back to what Counselor Wood has said very often, is, you know, the real work of the town happens in committee, you know, it happens in the council committees, it happens in the planning board, it happens in the finance committee, it happens, you know, Concom or wherever it happens, that's where the real work happens. And by the time an issue or by the time a piece of legislation gets to the council, it essentially should be ready for a vote, and it should have been pretty well-vetted right across, you know, whatever committees that it has to go to. And if we can, if there's a way for us to create a process that allows that vetting, allows more communication around that vetting, and allows, you know, speedier vetting, I think, I think your point's well taken. I think that would help everybody.
Well, I'll end with this. It just seems like the planning board, the planning board is not involved in the planning process, right? So a lot of work was done on this with engineers and things like that before we even saw it. It just seems like if we could incorporate the planning board in the planning process and not react to a final ordinance, I think that's what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, and your point's well taken. I'll take a little bit of the blame for that, though, Mr. Chair, because I was the one that really pushed this because we identified an issue that clearly we didn't know about. And in fact, most of the people that live within the affected area didn't know what they, they thought they were zoned business B. They didn't even know they were zoned industrially. So we tried to do something relatively quickly to fix it because, you know, we've got some potential development coming up that would require that it be, you know, properly zoned. So I will take a little bit of the, a little bit of the heat for how this was rolled out. But all your points are really well taken. I don't disagree with any of them. It's just a matter of making sure that we can create a process that that withstands the scrutiny that all the people that Mr. Jamie says are going to come and sue us.
And I'm not trying to be critical. I think the end result is what we wanted, right? So we wanted to protect the residents, and we wanted to change that to business B, right? So I'm happy with the end result. I just feel like it's a very messy process, you know? Any other comments? Any other public comments, Mr. Romels? Do you see anybody?
I do not.
Do we, we both voted? Do we want to adjourn? Do we want to stay on?
Both would have to separately adjourn.
Then Mr. Colin Bodas leaves?
It looks like he is no longer on here.
Maybe that was his dog barking.
Well, then I'll make a motion to adjourn the council committee.
Oh, it's like he came, but he's coming back in.
Let's still make the motion.
I would second that motion. We want to wait till Pete's connected?
Yeah, just-
So that he can vote to adjourn?
He can vote to adjourn.
Sorry, I lost my internet connection.
We were just wrapping stuff up, Eaton, and I made the motion to adjourn our committee and-
Okay.
Second, any discussion?
No.
Mr. Chase?
I vote yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. I've adjourned at eight forty-one.
All right. So do we, the planning board have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
By Mrs. Greenough, do we have a second?
Second.
By Mr. McDonald, any discussion? So Mrs. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jamie?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
We've adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.